Entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we're suspending the rules tonight because we have a special presentation from our friends at the library, and I believe our library director, Amy, is here today. So, Amy, good evening.
Hello, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Here you have a very exciting agenda today, so I am gonna make it quick. This year's community read is called Bite by Bite: Nourishments and Jamborees. It's by Amy Nez Huku Moktatiel. It's a collection of essays based on food and how we all build memories, share identities, and come together around food. And the appeal of this book to the committee is that the chapters, the essays, are really, really short.[747.01][747.01](Laughter) Some of them are just a page and a half, some of them are, you know, up to four pages. They are about things like sugarcane and blackberries and waffles, shave ice. They are things that we eat every day, they are things that we have never heard of before. But the author tells them all, tells all of the stories about how they fit her life and her friends and her loved ones. And the committee feels like that's something that we can all relate to. And at the same time, we were considering the book for the community read, we were working with some folks in the city who wanted to put on a cultural festival to demonstrate how diverse our city is and all of the fun, cool things that we all bring to the table. And so, we were able to include the Harmony Fiesta in our schedule of events, and that's happening at Capron Park on Saturday, September 27th. You guys, I didn't even mention to the folks at home that you all were given a copy of the book at your seats tonight, and you all have a quick highlight list of what's happening in September, because the events do start in September, and will go through April of 2026. Kickoff is on September 26th, excuse me, September 6th, at the Art Museum, right across the street. Mim Brooks Fawcett, the director at the museum, always has a really interesting take on the book, and the essay that she fell in love with is about shave ice. And everyone keeps telling me, isn't it shaved ice? It's not.[845.88][845.88](Laughter) It's shave ice, and it's a wonderful story about vacationing and the treats that you eat. And she has gotten a group of artists from Seacock to tell their stories in pictures about their best frozen treat memories, which is very fitting considering that Blisteri is right down the street. So, the other cool thing about this particular book, the focus of the list this year that we could choose from was place. And it talks about how food comes from a place. And we know that Attleboro is very conscious of their green space, very conscious of their water, solar power, all of the, my friend Kathy Garapi, master gardener, says, "Amy, that's the big three, it's all you need."[893.31][893.31](Laughter) So, there will be lots of gardening and environmental programming along with this. But the other part of place is where you are when you eat your foods, and whether it is your kitchen table, whether it is your back porch, whether it is at Tex Berry's Coney Island, whether it is at Morin's that we all waited a year to reopen, and how we said, "Oh, this is really great," but we really loved the meatloaf. So, we're having some great conversations about how to bring those memories to the forefront for people who didn't get to enjoy that. I will be sharing a story about how I once walked into the Park Tavern and silenced the place, and then was quietly asked to leave. So, I don't know how many of you remember the Park Tavern here in Attleboro, like, you're like, "Oh, yeah, I wanna hear that story." Off-camera.[944.82][944.82](Laughter) So, we really are going to be working with businesses, we're hoping to get involved with Restaurant Week this year, to really bring those memories and those stories to life. So, be thinking about that, because it is very likely you will get an email from someone on the library staff to share those stories, maybe share a recipe or two, and just really celebrate people coming together.
Awesome. Do we have any questions for Amy? All right. Amy, this is awesome, thank you for coming down, thank you for the enjoyment and the energy you bring around reading, but also thank you and your team for everything that you do, because there's so much more than just, you know, letting people borrow books that you guys do on a daily basis. You guys have a tough, tough job, maintaining one of the biggest draws in the city, and you're doing phenomenal work. So, thank you so much for everything that you and your team do. And there's so much that people don't see that you guys are doing on a regular basis.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good time, we're honored to do it, so thank you for letting me speak tonight.
You guys are awesome.
Okay.
Mr. Cobus.
I love this, this is great. While I'm here, do you wanna say anything about, was it December or November?
You always ask these questions, Todd. Yes, it came out in the paper today that we are closing for December, as you all know. We've let our cardholders know in the newsletter, and we are working really hard, I'm actually doing site visits now to relocate staff and do some programming and allow people to check things out from us around the city.
Thank you.
It'll be exciting.
Thank you. All right, very good, thank you so much.
Good night.
Okay, so before we get into the rest of the business of this evening, I'm going to recognize Counselor Sawyer to discuss the reconsideration of the July 15th tax incentive exemption that will be addressed this evening.
Well, from the document of June 3rd, 2025, I move to reconsider July 15th, 2025, vote three regarding the following authorization.
Second.
Thank you, motion is in order, Counselor. Sawyer, do you have any comment?
I do. I want to just mention that it was per the request of Mayor D. Simone that I filed a motion on July 16th, within the required 24 hours, to reconsider the vote regarding the tie for the development by Paragon on South Main Street with the promise of new information. I continue to have concerns regarding the project, as I feel it would make things harder for many people, including current city residents and businesses, due to parking issues, from microparking, parking enforcement issues, the multiple tax exemptions this developer has already received, and in 15 years comes around with inflation, $800,000 does not seem to be worth as much as now. Regarding the above and including the multiple emails calls I have received in opposition of this tie from residents who we represent, and since said new information is just being provided to us, I don't believe this gives the council enough time to make an informed decision, especially if any of us were to consider changing their vote from the original vote on July 15th. That is all my comments, thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other comments, we'll go directly into the roll call vote. Now, a yes vote is saying that you're in favor of reconsidering the motion, a no vote is saying you're not in favor of reconsidering the motion. We'll start with Mr. Cobus.
Mr. Cobus?
No.
Ms. Boa?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
No.
Ms. Reynolds?
No.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Whoops, excuse me, Ms. Holmes?
No.
Ms. Holmes, no?
No.
Ms. Sawyer?
No.
Mr. Waterman?
No.
Mr. Tavares?
No.
President Delicio?
No.
Eight nays, three ayes?
Motion fails, we will not be discussing this motion further this evening. I do wanna thank our city assessor, Kitha Garmit, I wanna thank our city planner for the hard work that they put into this. Thank you all. I will now go on to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of June 3rd, June 17th, June 24th, and July 15th.
Second.
Thank you, motion is in order, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Madam Clark, will you go into the reading of the first public hearing, please?
Certainly, first public hearing to amend Section 6-4.3 of the revised ordinances of the city as follows. Due to a scriveness error on June 24th, 2025, vote strike and replace the current ALS II emergency rate of $2,492.35, replace it with $3,884.97.
Thank you, do we have anyone to speak in favor? Do we have anyone to speak in favor? Do we have anyone to speak against? Anyone to speak neither for nor against? Seeing none, Council Holmes, do you see any reason to keep this public hearing open?
I do not.
Thank you, I declare that public hearing closed. Madam Clark, will you please read the notice for the second public hearing?
Second public hearing regarding, I shouldn't say second public hearing, public hearing regarding the proposed amendment to Sections 13-3, Classification Plan, and 13-4, Compensation Plan, by adding the following new position: Information Systems Technician, SATS-1. Salary is sixty, starting salary is $66,338.76 to $89,557.2.
Thank you, do we have anyone to speak in favor?
Good evening. Mason Lord, City Director of Budget Administration, it's been a little while, here to speak in favor. So, as the members of the council know, the MIS department is under the Budget and Administration Department, so under my purview. Our current structure is a three-employee department with an MIS director, a senior informations system technician, and then we currently have a position that's vacant, which is the computer programmer position. So, the goal of this matter that's before you is to still retain, have a three-employee structure, but we're looking to move away from this entry-level computer programmer position that we have, and have a much higher level, higher education, higher certification required, Information Systems Technician position. So, as many folks here know, the IT world is constantly changing, our software and our infrastructure has developed a lot over the last, not even just 10 years, but last two years, and we are a city that's continuing to grow. So, the need has continued to grow. We, for a little bit of background, we had our computer programmer, we had a really great employee in that position who just got a really great opportunity elsewhere, back in May, so right before the budget came down, so that position was vacated right after the budget came down. We were really sad to see that individual go, we were really fortunate to have them stay here for as long as they did. When they came in, they were coming in for the computer programmer position, which was a very entry-level data entry position. They really trained up their skills, got those certifications, got a lot of on-the-job experience, and, you know, unfortunately, we didn't really have a place for that employee to go for those higher-level responsibilities. So, in a lot of ways, the work that they were doing was far above the job description that they were in, and, you know, definitely above the sort of salary range that they were in. And, you know, the result is, you know, we just weren't able to be competitive. So, fortunately, our two existing staff, our MIS director and senior informations technician, they're really strong, capable staff members, and they were, they were willing to, you know, take, take a step back and work with us to sort of reevaluate the structure of the department for the long-term sustainability at sort of a personal sacrifice to them of knowing that they're gonna be working a lot of long hours, being, being down to the staff level that they've, they've been at. So, they've been working really hard for the last three months, and, you know, this, what's before you is what we think is a really comprehensive, updated, new job description that, you know, better serves the needs of the city, provide, you know, requires that CGR certification to ensure that there's sort of a dedicated staff person for our public safety departments, and just make sure that we have a more resilient structure going forward. Our goal would be to hire for this position, but if we get to a position where, you know, we just, we're just, the market doesn't feel good, we're not getting the applicants that we'd hope, we'd be willing to still hire at that entry-level position, but knowing that, you know, in those two to three years, we'd really be able to build someone up and get them into this higher position. So, we're looking to add this position to the class and comp plan, still remain at a staffing level of three, funded at three, but also keep that computer programmer position on the class and comp plan should, you know, future needs arise, and knowing that we wouldn't be looking to fund that right now, so.
Any clarifying questions from the council? Seems pretty straightforward. All right, Mason, thanks.
Thanks so much.
Anyone else to speak in favor?
Good evening, Lynn Daven, HR Director for the city. I don't wanna go over what Mason just did, but I do fully support that, 'cause I do think the city needs it. As we discussed when we adopted this new classification and compensation plan, it wasn't gonna be written in stone, we were gonna have things that we're gonna need to change and grow along the way, and I think this is one of those positions that we're finding that we need. We hope we're able in this job market to be able to find someone to fill that role, but as Mason said, if not, we'll fill the computer programmer, but I do think the city is fully in need of this, and to keep both positions in the plan to give us an option for the future. Thank you.
Great, additional questions, any questions rather? All right, Lynn, thank you. Do we have anyone else to speak in favor? Do we have anyone else to speak in favor to the public hearing that we have in front of us? Anyone else, anyone to speak against? Do we have anyone to speak neither for nor against?
Just wanted to ask quickly, like, I'm hearing somebody saying we need a senior-level developer, and we lumped up various certifications, I would just ask, is this, are those certifications required as part of the requirement of the job description? Just because lots of the senior people who I know are not necessarily certified one or another, but they have a ton of skills, and if you go and limit your market pool to people who are some particular certification, whereas, as opposed to the people who have a certain specific set of skill set, like, we want these skills as opposed to, we want these certifications, you're, you know, developers is a weird market, and I would just ask that certifications that you want to have, not necessarily a requirement of the job description, 'cause that seems like it artificially creates weirdness that is unnecessary.
Thank you, what we can do is, we can pass that feedback along. Thank you. Do we have anyone else speaking neither for nor against? Let's see, Council Angelo, do you see any reason to keep this public hearing open?
No, sir, I do not.
I declare that public hearing closed, we'll go on to a reading of the third and final public hearing.
Public hearing regarding an application from the Friends of Capron Park Zoo to waive Section 11-15.1 to serve alcoholic beverages or wine on city property on September the 28th, 2025, from 6:30 PM to 10:00 PM at Capron Park Zoo.
Thank you, do we have anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Anyone to speak neither for nor against? Seeing none, Council Boyd, do you see any reason to keep this public hearing open?
I do not.
I declare that public hearing closed. I would now entertain a motion entering the committee of the whole.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, uh, motion is in order, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we are now in committee of the whole, if anyone has any piece of business they would care to bring in front of the city council, please make your way to the podium. Okay, I would entertain a motion to arise from committee of the whole.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we are now arisen from committee of the whole. We'll now go on to a reading of the mayor's communication.
August 19th, 2025, Dear Municipal Council, I respectfully submit a communication from Veteran Service Director Ben Quell regarding the donation of a Duncan gift card totaling $30 from a veteran who wishes to remain anonymous.
Human Resources and Veterans Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Chief of Police Kyle P. Hagney regarding the anticipated receipt of the fiscal year 26 Massachusetts Gaming Commission Community Mitigation Funds in the amount of $49,900. Monies from this grant must be expended no later than June 30th, 2027. Please note this grant follows reimbursement protocol, and there is no matching requirement. In accordance with Chapter 1, Section 12 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Attleboro, I hereby request your Honorable Body approve expending of such funds. I hereby request your Honorable Body approve expending of such funds and any future grant amendments.
Public Safety and Emergency Management, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Human Resource Director Lynn Daven regarding the needs for funds to pay a fiscal year 25 invoice to ESI Employee Services LLC for services incurred in February 2025. Therefore, I hereby request your Honorable Body transfer $375 from the Personnel Staff Development Account to the Personnel Bills for Previous Year Account.
Human Resources and Veterans Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Director of Budget and Administration Mason Lord regarding the need for funds to pay three fiscal year 25 invoices totaling $556.68 to Amazon Business. Therefore, I hereby request your Honorable Body transfer $556.68 from Account Budget and Administration Data Processing Supplies to Account Budget and Administration Bills Previous Years.
Finance Committee, please.
As you will recall from the fiscal year 25 budget meetings, the ongoing disparity between the zoo's revolving funds, revenue, and expenditures, the $57.5 million of the needed capital improvements for the zoo identified in the fiscal year 2026-2030 Capital Improvements Plan, and the city's need for other significant capital improvement projects require an in-depth analysis of financially sustainable options for the zoo that take these challenges into account. Recognizing that current staff are fully engaged in their regularly assigned responsibilities and that this work will require, among other things, thorough research in an in-depth cost-benefit analysis and revenue projections in consideration of myred, other matters. The city will be hiring a part-time special projects coordinator to assist in this effort. Therefore, I hereby request your Honorable Body transfer $19,000 from the Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer Account to the Mayor's Salary and Wages Account, part-time.
Human Resources and Veterans Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Schools David Sawyer regarding obsolete Crowello Middle School Curriculum Books that the school department would like to surplus. There was no interest in the books from any of the city departments. Therefore, I hereby request your Honorable Body to declare the attached list of books as surplus and available for disposition.
City Property and Claims, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Water Dennis Morton regarding items that the Water Department would like to surplus. There was no interest from any of the departments. Therefore, I hereby request your Honorable Body to declare the following as surplus and available: Four damaged fire hydrants, scrap brass, scrap ductile iron, and scrap copper.
City Property and Claims.
Are in poor condition.
City Property and Claims, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Wastewater Thomas Hayes regarding vehicles that the Wastewater Department would like to surplus. There was no interest from any of the departments. Therefore, I hereby request your Honorable Body to declare the following as surplus and available for disposition: 2006 Ford E-150, very poor condition. 2006 Vector, poor condition. And a 2011 Ford F-550, very poor condition.
City Property and Claims, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Council on Aging Director Kelly Lee regarding the need to pay a fiscal year 25 invoice to Rico in the amount of $199.80. A vote authorizing payment is needed to satisfy this debt. There is no transfer of funds need to pay this bill as there is sufficient funding through Fund 2212.
Finance Committee, please.
Over the last 18 months, we have received an increased number of reports of dog attacks and associated requests for dangerous dog hearings. A few of these attacks have resulted in serious harm to residents. City staff have also been victims of these attacks. Because of the increased number of these complaints and the risk to residents, I believe it is in the city's best interest to place animal control under the jurisdiction of the Attleboro Police Department. Many municipalities in Massachusetts consider animal control to be a public safety matter, and I understand that many years ago, that was also the case in Attleboro. I have spoken with Chief Hegney and Park and Forestry Superintendent Derek Corsi, who currently oversees animal control, and they support moving animal control to the police department. Please know that in order to provide time to address internal administrative matters, this change in the associated ordinance amendments set forth below would not take effect until January 1st, 2026. Therefore, I hereby request your Honorable Body amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of Attleboro.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm going to weave the reading of the next three pages of this. For those watching at home, you can get a copy of this on the website, and we will be reading this into the record as we go along. I will assign that to Public Safety and Emergency Management. Councilwoman, would you like to call for a public hearing on October 7th?
Yes, second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
For your information, I regret to inform your Honorable Body we have received the resignation of Barry LaCastre from the Contributory Retirement Board. Please join me in thanking Mr. LaCastre for his service to the city.
That's an FYI. Thank you, Mr. LaCastre.
I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Wastewater Thomas Hayes and Superintendent of Water Dennis Morton regarding the need to pay fiscal year 25 invoices to Badger Meter. Therefore, I hereby request your Honorable Body transfer $6.38 from the Wastewater Enterprise Fund Reserve Fund for Transfer Account to the Wastewater Enterprise Fund Bills from Previous Years Account. Additionally, I hereby request your Honorable Body transfer $9.58 from the Water Enterprise Fund Reserve Fund for Transfer Account to the Water Enterprise Fund Bills from Previous Years Account.
Public Works Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Wastewater Thomas Hayes regarding the need to pay a fiscal year 25 invoice from Mayor Corp. Therefore, I hereby request your Honorable Body transfer $43 from the Wastewater Enterprise Fund Reserve Fund for Transfer Account to the Wastewater Enterprise Fund Bills from Previous Years Account.
Public Works Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Park and Forestry Derek Corsi regarding the need to replenish funds in the heating account after an internal transfer was made to HVAC Services Account to diagnose and repair a Freon leak on the HVAC system at the animal shelter. Therefore, I hereby request your Honorable Body transfer $2,566.62 from the Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer Account to the Animal Shelter Heating Account.
Public Works, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Park and Forestry Derek Corsi regarding the need for funds to pay a fiscal year invoice to Rico USA. Therefore, I hereby request your Honorable Body transfer $284.31 from the Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer Account to the Park Bills from Previous Years Account.
Public Works, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Park and Forestry Derek Corsi regarding the donation of 13 assorted 1.5-inch to 2-inch caliber trees to the City of Attleboro Park and Forestry Department from 131 Pleasant Street LLC with an estimated value of approximately $2,275. These trees will be planted at various tree-needy parks within the city. In accordance with Section 1-12 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Attleboro, I hereby request your Honorable Body accept this generous donation to the City of Attleboro.
City Profiting Claims, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from City Treasurer Laura Gignac regarding a loan authorization to purchase an ambulance for the Fire Department. As identified in the City of Attleboro Capital Improvements Program for fiscal year 2026 through 2030, the Fire Department needs to replace a frontline rescue. The estimate for this vehicle is $717,000.
Public Safety and Emergency Management, please. And Council Holmes, would you like to call for a public hearing on September 16th?
Yes, second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
I respectfully submit a communication from Chief of Police Kyle P. Hegney regarding the need to replace the four police dispatch radio consoles that have reached the end of their service life and are now considered obsolete by the manufacturer. The cost associated with the necessary equipment materials, labor to install the four radio consoles, and a 10% contingency is $391,400. Therefore, I respectfully request a transfer of $391,400 from the Citywide Reserve Fund for Capital Account to the Police Radios Account to cover the associated costs with replacing the police dispatch radio consoles.
Public Safety and Emergency Management, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Attleboro Public Schools Director of Finance Brittany Perella regarding the following fiscal year 25 fiscal obligations totaling $2,572.50 that were not received in time to be processed in the normal fiscal year 25 business cycle. $738 to maximum health care, Sweetwater $384.50, Brendan Sullivan $650, Taft Educational Center $800. Therefore, I hereby request your Honorable Body authorize the school department to pay these previous year's school bills totaling $2,572.50 as identified in Ms. Perella's communication.
Finance Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Attleboro Public Schools Director of Finance Brittany Perella regarding the following fiscal year 25 fiscal obligations totaling $28,414.28 that were not received in time to be processed in the normal fiscal year 25 business cycle. Train, $21,600. Train, $6,814.28. Therefore, I hereby request your Honorable Body authorize the school department to pay these previous school year bills totaling $28,414.28 as identified in Ms. Perella's communication.
Finance Committee, please.
And again, I respectfully submit a communication from Attleboro Public Schools Director of Finance Brittany Perella regarding the following fiscal year 25 fiscal obligation totaling $2,200 that was not received in time to be processed in the normal fiscal year 25 business cycle. This is going to Katie Scott, $2,200. Therefore, I hereby request your Honorable Body authorize the school department to pay this previous year's school bill totaling $2,200 as identified in Ms. Perella's communication.
Finance Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Schools David Sawyer regarding the following donations.
You can waive the reading. That'll go to City Profiting Claims, please.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
For your information, I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Wastewater Thomas Hayes regarding an update on the emergency bypass pumping system rental for the South Attleboro Pump Station.
That's an FYI to all councilors, please.
For your information, I respectfully submit a communication from Director of Human Resources Lynn Daven concerning the upcoming retirement of the benefits coordinator. Because of the importance of this position in managing health benefits for city employees and retirees, Ms. Daven is hoping to hire a new benefits coordinator prior to the retirement of the current employee in that position to allow for six to eight weeks of onboarding and training for the new coordinator. Depending upon the timing and salary of a newly hired benefits coordinator, there may be a need for additional funds to provide for this crossover training. While the amount of additional funding, if any, is undetermined, Ms. Daven approximates a potential need for $12,000 in funding should the new benefits coordinator be hired at the same rate of pay as the current benefits coordinator. Should additional funds be needed, a funding request will be submitted to your Honorable Body.
FYI, copy to all councilors, please.
For your information, I regret to inform your Honorable Body we have received the resignation of Jackie Romaneki from the Attleboro Redevelopment Authority. Please join me in thanking Ms. Romaneki for her service to the city.
That's an FYI to all councilors, and Jackie, certainly thank you for all you've done.
I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Public Works Michael Tyler regarding the need to reimburse an employee for the cost of the hoisting license paid in fiscal year 25. Therefore, I hereby request your Honorable Body transfer $59 from the Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer Account to the Public Works Previous Years Bills Account.
Public Works Department, please. Public Works Committee, I think I just gave that to Mike Tyler, so I'll give it to you.
Although I recently provided you, your Honorable Body, with an email update on the Wading River Permanent Treatment Plant Project, I respectfully submit the information below to ensure it is included in the public record regarding this matter. As you are aware, in fiscal year 24, the city applied and was approved for $35 million in project financing through the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust State Revolving Fund. Bids were received in May for the construction of the plant with anticipated completion in the fall of 2027. In June, our engineering design consultant firm Tata and Howard applied to the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, MAS DEP, for authorization to award the construction contract to the low bidder from May. Authorization is required before a contract can be executed with the selected bidder. As part of the authorization to award from MAS DEP, the Clean Water Trust must get approval to award the project from the Environmental Protection Agency, EPA. This is due to some of the funding assessed by the Clean Water Trust coming from the EPA. On Wednesday, July 23rd, we were informed by MAS DEP that they were anticipating EPA was likely to reject the project. We understand their reasoning. Cause for rejection was primarily related to certain parts and equipment in the new Build America by America BABA federal procurement requirements. As you may recall, because some of the Clean Water Trust funding comes through the EPA, the project is subject to federal procurement laws. If even $1 for the project comes from the federal government, 100% of the project must meet the various federal procurement restrictions, including 100% BABA compliance. On July 24th, I convened a meeting with MAS DEP, Tata and Howard, city staff, representatives from our federal delegation offices to see what could be done to advance this important project. All parties agreed there was no recourse we could take with the EPA directly. Also during the meeting, MAS DEP formally recommended that we work with them to modify our bids and specifications to rebid the project and that we request an extension through the Clean Water Trust. We immediately worked with MAS DEP to request an extension for the award and principal debt forgiveness from the Clean Water Trust. Fortunately, we were granted an extension on July 30th, extending the period to award this project and still be eligible for principal debt forgiveness until November 30th, 2025. Once we had this extension, we immediately began preparing for a rebid. Tata and Howard worked directly with MAS DEP to address the items, reasons for which that EPA rejected the project. MAS DEP has to approve the bid package and provide permission to advertise before the project goes out to bid. So we worked with them directly on revisions to expedite the process. We received permission to advertise on Wednesday, August 6th, and on Thursday, August 7th. We submitted the required bill advertisements that ran on Wednesday, August 13th. All rebid documents are publicly available. For your information, the bidding timeline will be as follows: Eight 13 documents available for bidding, September 3rd, sub bids due. September 17th, general bids due. Once the bidding is complete, we'll go through the authorization to award process with MAS DEP and EPA once again. All of this will need to be completed in advance of the extension date of November 30th in order to ensure access to principal forgiveness. Also, the anticipated completion date for the project is now January 2028, a few months delay. Please know that although this delay is unfortunate because principal forgiveness has been extended, there is a path forward to do this project as affordably as possible and in a timely manner. We will do everything we can to move this urgent project forward without additional delays.
FYI to all councilors, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Water Dennis Morton regarding the need to pay fiscal year 25 invoice to Home and Commercial. Therefore, I hereby request your Honorable Body transfer $45 from the Water Enterprise Fund Reserve Fund for Transfer Account to the Water Enterprise Fund Bills from Previous Years Account.
Public Works Committee, please.
Sincerely, Kathleen D. Simone, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and we will go on to a reading of the clerk's communication.
...communication on August 19th, 2025. We have received a Keeping a Stand in a Public Place License Application from Tavern on the Square, 2028 Washington Street, and also an application to waive Section 11-15.1 to serve alcoholic beverages or wine on city property. The event is to be held on October 25th, 2025, at 104 Mechanic Street from 11 a.m. to 3 p.m.
License Committee, please. And Council Lavoie, would you like to call for a public hearing on September 16th?
I would, second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
That concludes communications for this evening.
Thank you so much, and we will now go into committee reports beginning as always with Mr. Cobus.
Thank you. Reporting for the Finance Committee. We have two items tonight from the docket of July 15th, 2025. I move to approve the Attleboro Building Permit Fee Waiver Application from Union Theater Plaza LLC and Illuminate Creative and Theatrical Arts Company, 68 Union Street.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. You guys were racing. We'll give it to Sarah Lynn. Mr. Cobus.
We had the public hearing. I encourage people to support this. I think it's a great thing for the city. Yeah, I think it's a no-brainer for us.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Angelo.
Thank you, President. Again echoing Council Cobus's statements. And this is a great thing, and I think this is going to bring a lot of people to the city once this gets up and moving. And they have a lot of challenges in front of them, and they have a lot of things to do. And this is going to be a good piece to help them get it taken care of.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote beginning with Mr. Tavares. Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Tavares.
Mr. Tavares.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer.
Yes.
Mr. Angelo.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Vice President Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy.
Yes.
Ms. Foa.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
President Delicio.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
And from the docket of July 15th, 2025, I move to approve the following amendments of the revised ordinances of the City of Attleboro, and these are the amendments to change the compensation for inspectors that we read during committee.
Second.
Thank you, motion is in order. Any questions or comments?
We had a public hearing about this, this was supported by the building inspector, and I think it's also a no-brainer.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Cobus.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Ms. Foa.
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Vice President Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Angelo.
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Tavares.
Yes.
President Delicio.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
That concludes the business for the License Committee, and I would call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you, Councilor Reynolds.
City Property and Claims Committee has no business this evening, but I would like to call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you very much. Vice President Dolan.
Thank you, reporting for the Public Works Committee. I move to transfer $2,148.78 from account wastewater enterprise fund reserve fund for transfer to account wastewater enterprise fund previous year's bills to pay a fiscal year 2025 invoice for a delivery of crushed stone received on 6/30/25.
Thank you, motion is in order. Any comments?
No, we discussed in committee.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor Tavares.
Mr. Tavares.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer.
Yes.
Mr. Angelo.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Angelo.
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer.
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Vice President Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Angelo.
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer.
Yes.
Mr. Angelo.
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer.
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy.
Yes.
Ms. Foa.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
From the docket of August 19th, 2025, I move to transfer $476.12 from account wastewater enterprise fund reserve fund for transfer to account wastewater enterprise fund previous year's bills for a fiscal year 2025 invoice to purchase a repair part for PC2.
Thank you, motion is in order, any comments?
No, we discussed in committee.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor Cobus.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Ms. Foa.
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Vice President Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Angelo.
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Tavares.
Yes.
President Delicio.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
That's all the business for the Public Works Committee, and I call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you, Councilor Holmes.
Thank you, reporting for Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee from the docket of August 19th, 2025. I move to approve the spending of such funds and any future grant amendments regarding the anticipated receipt of the fiscal year 25 9/11 training grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security in the amount of $278,737.71.
Second.
Thank you, motion is in order. Did you mean to say fiscal '26 or '25?
Oh, sorry, did I say '25, '26?
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Thank you for the correction.
No worries. Any questions, comments?
I just wanted to thank Council Lavoy, he filled in for me in July and read these two motions out, and we do have backup on it, and it's just a grant, so it's exciting that we're getting it.
Thank you. Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor Tavares.
Mr. Tavares.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer.
Yes.
Mr. Angelo.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Vice President Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Angelo.
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Tavares.
Yes.
President Delicio.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
That concludes the business this evening, and I call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you, Councilor Holmes. Councilor Lavoy.
Council Angela, I'm sorry.
Reporting for Human Resources and Veterans Committee from the docket of August 19th, 2025, move to accept the donation of a gift certificate for plumbing services in the amount of $200, and a gift certificate for the barber shop services, the amount of $50 from Amanda and Aria Lavoy of Attleboro.
Second.
Thank you, motion is in order. Any comments?
Very generous of Amanda and Aria Lavoy, and we appreciate and thank them very much.
Thank you. Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Call for Human Resources and Veterans Committee, and I call for a meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you very much. Councilor Sawyer.
Reporting for Zoning, Land Use and Sustainability Committee, I have one item tonight from the docket of June 3rd, 2025. I move to accept the, and approve the recommendations from the planning board to amend zoning ordinance S-17-3.5, Table of Accessory Use Regulations, S.7-4.5.2, Accessory Dwelling Units, General Standards, and S.7-11.2, Definitions of the Zoning Ordinance.
Second.
Thank you, motion is in order. Any comments?
No, we discussed it in committee.
Okay, additional questions, Mr. Lavoy?
Just that it was S-17-11.2?
Or did I say that wrong? I apologize.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure it's.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions or comments? Seeing none, we're gonna have a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor Tavares.
Mr. Tavares.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer.
Yes.
Mr. Angelo.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Vice President Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Angelo.
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer.
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy.
Yes.
Ms. Foa.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
President Delicio.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
That concludes the business for the Zoning, Land Use and Sustainability Committee, and I move to have a committee meeting at the next most appropriate time.
Thank you, Mr. Waterman.
Traffic and Transportation Committee has no business this evening, we'll meet at the next appropriate time.
Thank you. Mr. Tavares.
Reporting for ordinances, elections, and legislative matters from the docket of May 20, 2025, I move to amend the times within section 17-10.15, item F dot 6 of the city ordinances as follows. Marijuana retail sales or medical marijuana patient sales may not occur within the hours of 1 a.m. to 7 a.m. and may be further restricted as a condition of approval of the special permit issued by the special permit granting authority.
Second.
Thank you, motion is in order. Any comments?
We discussed this in committee several weeks ago, but the, the main point that I wanted to reiterate is that I've spoken to the police chief about this change to the ordinances, he has no concerns with it at this time, but it's certainly something that we'll want to monitor and make sure that there aren't any public safety issues, but generally speaking, the chief hasn't had any concerns since these marijuana retail establishments have been open in the city for the last several years.
Thank you. Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Cobus.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Ms. Foa.
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy.
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
No.
Mr. Tavares.
Yes.
President Delicio.
Yes.
Ten yeas, one nay.
Thank you, motion passes.
So I will be holding this next matter regarding the home rule petition for a future council meeting, reason being, I had a conversation with Representative Hawkins who is working on legislation that addresses a similar issue in regards to the stabilization of rents more comprehensively, but it would affect mobile home parks as well, so.
I mean, we can discuss in committee, because you didn't get a second, so are you gonna read it in? Okay.
Nope, he can give a general comment.
Oh, he can, I'm sorry.
Nope, no worries, I appreciate it.
So in, in light of that, I feel it makes sense to wait on this several weeks. Representative Hawkins mentioned that this will be, that this matter will be heard in committee, it's been assigned, and it'll be heard at the beginning of September, so I figured it's prudent at this point to wait a few weeks before we decide how to move forward with the matter. We certainly don't want to be duplicating efforts that the legislature is currently addressing.
Thank you, appreciate that diligence. Nope, no worries at all. And Councilor Tavares, do you have anything else?
I do. From the docket of February 4, 2025, I move to approve the following amendment change to amend Chapter 7, Section 3.5 by banning the use of second generation anticoagulant rodenticides and to include bromothaline of use on all city-owned properties, both inside and outside. Below is the amended ordinance voted in committee on 6/24/25. May I waive the reading in light of the fact that we've read this out in committee?
You may.
Second.
Thank you, motion is in order. Any comments?
So just to continue the discussions that we had, I shouldn't say to continue, to recap the discussion several weeks back in committee, this, this particular change to the ordinance adds in 7-3.5, which is the use of second generation anticoagulant rodenticides, and adds a definition for second generation coagulant rodenticides. And there are some smaller changes that aren't substantive, otherwise this largely represents the, the ordinance that's currently in place. This, the language that's proposed here is language that I've put together based on what other cities have done, who have banned ESKRs, as well as a conversation with the city solicitor on, on the validity of this language as well. As I mentioned in committee, this is not something that I support, I don't think that the council should support this at this time, while I do think that the dangers of the use of ESKRs are real, and it's something that we should address. I think this is something that should be handled by the administration, or that we should work with the administration to look for alternatives to, to handle rodent control and things of that nature in the city. I don't think it's prudent to handicap ourselves as a, as a city at this point, as this would only apply to city-owned property. That concludes my comments.
Council Angela.
Thanks, President Delicio, I just have a question, is on amending this to add banning of the glue traps, would that be, would that need to be on a future amendment, or can that be added to this?
Where specifically do you want to do that, Council?
Certainly fine with, I mean, we could add it in right after 7-3.5, make it 7-3.6.
So my concerns.
Or no, it can't be 6, it would have to be a different.
Yeah, it would have to be. My concern with that is that's not a rodenticide per se, I think that, that we would then run the risk of changing the intent of the public hearing, and we may have to open that up again. What I would suggest, if you wanted to do further research on that, you could do that and then potentially reintroduce it.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Vice President Dolan.
Thank you. I know, I'm trying to read through this quickly, does this say, I feel like when we discussed it before, there was, in case we actually had like an emergency and we needed it, that it would be, we would be able to use it. Is that correct? Am I right in remembering that?
That's, that's correct, yeah, there, there is a, if I may, President Delicio.
You may. Seven dash 3.5 is actually a section that says emergency.
Oh, emergency waivers, all right, yep, got it. And if I could.
Joseph, will you ask a question? Councilor Tavares, anything you'd like to add?
No, that, that was it.
Okay, thank you.
May I? And as far as, is this effective upon passage?
In, in the absence of other language, I think the answer's yes.
So I'd like to.
So that's what I would say, I would say generally in these situations, unless it's called out as, Councilor Tavares has the, it's generally assumed that it's effective at passing.
So I would like to add a friendly amendment to have this implemented in January 2026?
It wouldn't be a friendly amendment, I think we would have to amend it, so if you want to make the.
So I'd like to amend the execution date of January 2026.
Second.
Thank you, motion is in order. Any comments?
I just, I just feel like it would give the city time to get their ducks in a row and figure out where to go from here.
Okay. Additional questions on the amendment of adding effective January 1st, 2026? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor Cobus.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Ms. Foa.
No.
Mr. Lavoy.
No.
Ms. Reynolds.
No.
Vice President Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Angelo.
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer.
I want to just clarify, this is on the amendment, is that correct?
Yes.
I am. Oh. I am- Then I'm saying yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Waterman? Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
President Delicio? Eight yeas, three nays.
Thank you, the amendment passes. We're now back to discussion on the main motion as amended. Council Cobus?
Thank you, President Delicio. I have a question, if I could, through the President to Chair Tavares. This, the fines that are listed here in 7-3.6, it says any person who violates any provision of this ordinance shall be subject to fines following a schedule of the first offense, $25, and increasing from there. So those are fines for violating this ordinance for putting, using ESCARs on city properties. These are fines to be paid by city workers doing, like, how does this work, and is there any precedent? Did we get clarification on that? Like, this, it is, has this ever been done in the city ordinances? Yes.
The chair will recognize, Mr. Tavares.
Sorry, apologize. Thank you, President Delicio. Yeah, this is a weird one, actually, most of the conversation I had with the city solicitor was around this section, so this section already exists in the ordinance, so would definitely be outside of the scope of the original public hearing to address any change to the fines. The fines apply to this whole section, which, before the addition of the banning of ESCARs for the proposed amendment here, could apply to residents in the city who violate other subsections in this particular provision. So to answer your question, yes, a city employee could be found to violate that section and have to pay fines. It is a bit strange, but it's not unprecedented, it definitely proposes this very strange situation, but the solicitor didn't have an issue with the validity of that section.
So just a point of clarification, this would include vendors as well?
Yes.
So if we have a contracted vendor that came in, used it, city found out, that's where the fines could take place as well?
Could be, yeah, could be city departments, could be outside, third-party vendors.
Okay. Mr. Cobus?
My question would more, this is, I wouldn't know, would the city be responsible to pay the fee to itself? Would the vendor be, would the city worker, if they were on city time? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lavoie?
Thank you. So when I put this through, no city department at the moment handles this themselves, it's all through an outside vendor, so I don't see where that would apply, but yeah, so the fines initially were for feeding animals, dumps, you know, not, property owners not keeping up with waste on property, things like that, that create vermin issue. This was the only section in all of the city charter where I could find anywhere to put this in that addressed rats specifically, so the fines were kind of just there when I put this subsection in, but from what I grasp and my research, this would only apply to outside vendors in terms of who handles pest control. I guess, yeah, somebody could get caught if they were doing that, but as of today, no city department is handling that themselves.
Thank you.